AM, I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session October the 2nd of the Limestone County Commission. Public comment, I know we've got several in here today probably going to speak. We do three minutes, you know, we give everybody time to speaks, but if you have any between times or any other time we're available, so there with the Dale Dings, just try to finish up where you at, because I know several people are going to sign up to speak, right Ellen?
We have four.
Four, okay, alright, so public comment, go ahead.
Lori Masonia.
Lori, how you doing this morning?
Doing well, sir. Good morning, gentlemen. I was here at the last meeting, and so I'm here to refresh my request. My request was for $300,000 of the opioid settlement, or the maximum amount we could receive to start a ladies recovery home in Limestone County. Since our last meeting, we have lost two lives to drug addiction here in Limestone County. We had an event last Saturday, and all the food that was left, we took into the county homeless shelter, or in the woods where people are living out there, to explain to the ones that were in addiction, they didn't have to live like that. We were able to rescue a lady who committed to go to treatment. She is in a rehab facility in Morgan County, and that's what we're trying to do, is let people know that you don't have to live like this, there is help available for you, it is for free. This is a critical urgent matter, it can happen to the younger generation, elderly generation, you know, your grandkids, my grandkids, whatever. So I just wanted to come forward today and give you some statistics. We do have a lead on a house out in the county, and I think it would be a prime location, and we want to start with six women and a full-time house mom. We want to start small and learn as we go, because I'm sure we'll make some mistakes as we go. We hope within a year that we could expand that and possibly even open a men's home. Limestone County is desperate, desperate for these facilities. Thank you for your time. Mr. Chairman, I want to please ask you to bring this to a vote as soon as possible. Thank you and have a blessed day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Doug Higginbotham.
How you doing Doug? Good morning.
Again, my name is Doug Higginbotham. I'm a landowner on Mooreville Road, about a mile north of Barstool Road, and I'm going to revoice my things that happened since the last meeting. And my concern is a draining issue on the development that's taking place on the backside of my farm. And this development area borders on Metta's Road, okay? Since the last meeting, I met with the county engineers out at the development site. At that point, they reviewed the plat that they had on the property. The plat that they had did not show a four-foot pipe going out to my property, okay? It was not on the plat, okay? Since then, the engineers have met with Morel Engineering, and they're looking, Morel is looking at revising the drainage issue, okay? So right now, I'm waiting on Morel Engineer for a drainage solution. Work on the site is continuing, now they've got dozers running out there, building streets and everything. In my opinion, the development should be stopped until we get this drainage issue resolved, okay? And I guess one of the questions I got is, how often is inspection done on these development sites by the county engineers? You know, in a week's time, they can move a lot of dirt and stuff with these track holes and bulldozers, so that's what bothers me. The question I had is, if I had not discovered this drainage issue on my own, what kind of mess would we be in right now? Next question is, when can I be contacted with, by Morel Engineering with a resolution on this issue? Now, I quickly go back to the drainage problem. Looking at it out there the other day, it, what they did, they took equipment and pushed out like a, it's more like a basin, okay? It's not meant to hold water. It's got a, and it's got the four-foot pipe going out of it, so all this water is being diverted into this basin, out the four-foot pipe, right on top of me, okay? At the present, look at it. Alright, in closing, you know, I find this process of site development very disturbing at this point in time, okay? Anybody got any questions?
I would agree with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you Doug.
Does the developer, does the developer know of the situation that's on their land? Does Bank Independent understand that the plat, the approved plat by the county commissioners was not built according to the plat, and does Bank Independent know the issue that's at hand? And who should be the person to address it?
During the recess, we'll speak with the engineer on that, please. I mean, an attorney. Alrighty. Ellen, next.
Helen Thompson.
Ms. Thompson? How you doing today Helen?
I'm pretty good.
I don't know if I need this or not, but I'm going to give it a shot. So I'm really here to talk about two things today. One is the Veterans Treatment Court, and the second is the Veterans Day Parade. So we have had a working group going on now for probably almost a year, working on getting a Veterans Treatment Court here in Limestone County. Judge Huggins is on that working group, and he will be the presiding judge over the Veterans Treatment Court. Thus far, we have gotten one $28,000 grant from the Administration of Courts office, and that money went to the, the Community Corrections Organization to administer, be the program managers for the courts. I'm here today to seek support from the Commission for grants, federal grants, to further support that Veterans Treatment Court in the form of a mentor coordinator and a couple of other positions, and some treatment programs for the veterans. In order to apply for these grants, we have to have someone to administer the grant. And I want to know, because rumor has it, the county is not interested in this, so I thought I'd just come to the horse's mouth, as it were, and find out if you guys are prepared to administer a federal grant if we write it, and, and we are lucky enough to be awarded money. If you don't want to, that's fine, we just want to know right now, before we start the process. So, that's the question on the table today. Any questions about the Veterans Treatment Court?
I will get with Drew and Grant Ryder on those situations.
Yeah.
Get back with you on that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helen.
Commissioner Daly, and I do want to talk about the Veterans Day Parade. So, just recently, the Veterans Day Parade was handed off to the American Veterans Post 21, and we're working hard to get that to go. So this year, it will be on Veterans Day, here in, in the city of Athens, and we need you all's support to come out, put a float in the parade, a unit, a car, a tractor, whatever you want to drive, come out and support us. This is the first year AmVets has been asked to do this, we're happy to do it, but we need the support of the, of the commissioners to see that through. So, if you want, I have the forms with me today to sign up to put your unit in the parade, and I have the rules for the parade, we've got our insurance, our permits are in, everything is tracking, but I just wanted to make sure you all were aware, and that we could get your support for that parade.
A hundred percent. Yeah, I saw the, you emailed us the route and all that, where they're starting at the high school.
I did.
And Iron Street and going around by Shaw Street, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am, we'll be a hundred percent supportive of it.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Laura Lynn Kerner.
Ms. Laura Lynn, how you doing this morning?
We're doing good. I'm different, I want to come and say thank you to this commission for having given, given the people that use the poos a year. And I want to say thank you, and most of the people that are here, so would you all clap your hands for? Thank you. And I know that you all will be considering other things about the whole Wellness Center, and I just want to let you all know that we are behind you all in what you do for the Wellness Center, and for this community, and I would just want to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura Lynn.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
No further comments?
No further comments. Thank everybody for showing up today, and like I said, you know, we've said it every time, if you cannot make it in, or something to make a comment, you're more than welcome to email us one in, and we'll put it in the record and revise that. Thank you. So, first thing on the agenda today will be the minutes from September the 18th of '23. Does anybody have any discussion with the minutes? Alright, no discussion. Next on here will be to approve the claim, the amount of $1,62,321.24. Anybody got a discussion with any claim? Alright, no claim discussion, conflicts of interest, that shouldn't better be on them, but anybody got any conflicts of interest, anything to say in front of the commission body? Alright, so public hearings, we'll have none today. Resolutions, orders will be to approve a supplement resolution for the school tax. We had approved the tax the other day, and, of the resolution, it was a little paperwork typo, and Drew can, if you have anything, Drew can alleviate on that.
It's just going to do two things, it'll correct the typographical error in the resolution, and the second thing it'll do is just leave no doubt that all the signatures on the one mil tax, it's going to be voted on where we're sufficient and accepted by the commission.
Alright, anybody got any questions? Anybody have a discussion with that? Alright, number two will be to approve a resolution participating in the 24 severe weather participation tax, preparedness tax holiday, and it's February the 23rd to the 25th of '24. That should be, I think it's weekend, it always happens, but we do this every year, this is just a preparing for the year. Anybody got any discussion with that? Alright, number three will be to approve a resolution to establish a dangerous dog fee and registration, and the authorization of the county attorney to pursue action under Emily's Law, or the Dangerous Dog Law, and Drew can alleviate on this, if I have any questions with that.
So essentially, what this is, let me split it into two parts here. The first part is a dangerous dog fee and registry, which is provided for by a state statute. It's, it's going to be $100 for the registration fee for dangerous dogs. So Emily's Law is Alabama's law that governs when a dog is declared dangerous by the Circuit Court, and generally, when a dog is found to be a threat of death or serious injury, that a judge will declare it dangerous, and then it's either euthanized, or the owner has to go through, you know, a litany of steps in order to keep the dog, and one of which is that it stays enclosed, in an enclosed pen or fenced yard, something like that, but also that it's registered with the county. And so, that registry will be established, and then the fee would be established, that's that first part. The second part is, the statute directs that the county attorney, in the case of counties, take these, take these dangerous dog cases to the Circuit Court, when it's decided that a dog may be of this nature. So, in lieu of getting authorization every time one of these cases comes up, and it's only one or two a year, I'd ask that you all would give me just authority to go ahead and take these to the Circuit Court. The expenses are low, and there's a need for speed in these, at some points too, so. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Is that the way the read, the resolution reads, that we'll give you the authority?
Yes, that's what it'll say.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions? Alright, no other questions, we'll be moving on. Approve a resolution regarding the below Mooreville Road intersection projects, and that'll be on down, we just had to have a resolution to approve.
I would like to talk about that a second, Mr. Chairman. That Mooresville and Brown's Ferry, I guess Huntsville has three corners of it, and we have then probably the frontage lots on the other corner are still in Limestone County, but behind that is Huntsville. I essentially consider that intersection as belonging to the city of Huntsville. Now, I understand we're going to do the, that's for the turn lanes.
Yeah, this is part of that, those grants that we've received, and through.
Will all this be grant money?
It's grant money, so we've got three different sources of grant funding, so two of them through ADECA, and one through ALDOT. We have to, we have to be the receiving authority, because of the nature of some of those grants, can't go through Huntsville, so we have to be the receiving authority, but we've been in contact with Huntsville, they're going to participate and cover the costs on their share, which would essentially cover our match costs, so.
So they're doing the signaling, we're just doing the base turn lanes?
Yes, putting, putting the turn lanes in, they'll design and install the signals outside of the, actually, outside of the grants, and they'll be, they'll participate with some matching funds on the grants.
What about paving from Brown's Ferry down to Greenbrier?
That's, that's all included in the conversation.
I guess we, they go to Humphrey Road, and then we go from Humphre-. Now, did we get our money on paving Mooresville from Humphrey on down?
Yeah, that's all part of this.
That's all?
It's all, it's all part of this.
What, what kind of time for, do you know what kind of timeframe?
That I don't know, the, the grant writer that was involved in it, this is just kind of the next step, would be for us to approve a resolution to hire an engineer to do the design for the turn lanes, and put the bid package together. And so, that's, that's, that's kind of the next step, as far as discussing timeframes, but, but we, we do have to hire the engineer to do the design for the turn lanes.
Good, thank you.
And this is that billion-dollar grant that we received here for just ARC money, what was just?
A half a million from CDVG, and a million from ARC.
So if, have we got the money from ARC, or just, they said we're going, checks in the mail, or?
No, we don't, we don't have the funds, it's one of.
Checks in the mail.
No, we, we have to get through certain phases of the process.
They pay as we go. They reimburse us. Alright, and like I said, us and Shane Davis actually had, me and Mark, and Shane Davis had a meeting about the intersections here a few weeks ago, so.
You are correct, in, in the nature of the intersection, and that, and so they are participating.
Alright, any more questions? And I know this will be, and most of the road is in District 3, but it is a little bit of it that comes up in the intersection there District 2, the North Side intersection.
Yeah, but it's in the city of Huntsville.
Yes, that's right. But any more discussion? Alright, no more discussion, contracts, agreements, MOUs, and grants will be to approve an EMA Performance Grant Agreement in the amount of $42,266. Anybody got a discussion with that? Alright, number two will be to approve an Alabama Department of Youth Services Grant in the amount of $47,840 for the fiscal year of '23 and '24. We apply for this grant every year. Anybody got a discussion with that? Alright, the three will be to approve a license agreement with recovery organizations for some support specialists for the use of space at the Community Corrections. Anybody got a discussion with that? And this is something we already have to. Alright, number four will be to approve an amended contract for services between the Limestone County Commission and Katie Henson, provide contract services, coordinator for the diversion services of juveniles. amended contract will be for a period of October the 1st of '23 through September the 30th of '24. And we had approved it last meeting, I presume it was a typo in it somewhere, right Drew?
This was actually a request for her to have an increase in her salary, but the increase will come from the grant money, and is already in her budget.
Okay, alrighty.
What, what did we go from into the increase?
I believe it was sixteen, sixty-five to eighteen. She hasn't had an increase since Sonia Anthony left, and Sonia was in charge of all the grants, but it's, it's in her budget, it's, it's no funds from the county.
It's all paid for through this Youth Services Grant. Any more discussion with that? Number five will be to approve a consulting and service agreement, or agreements with Morel Engineering Services, provides surveying and engineering services for the following locations, and this is Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road and Mooreville Road Intersections, and this is Highway 20 and Mooreville Road Intersection, and those are the intersections that we were talking about earlier, so. Anybody got a discussion with that? Alright, number six will be to approve a construction agreement for industrial access project between the state of Alabama and the Limestone County Commission, this is for the, down at the airport, this is the Project Fox, this is, anybody got a discussion with that?
We've, we have, we have, this, we have approved the agreement and received it back from the state. I think that this should have been to select a consultant from the state's on-call services contract, and to enter into an agreement for the design services. And so, we, like I said, I think this was probably just a carryover from when we, when we approved the agreement, we received the agreement, executed agreement back from the state for this contract, so we need to approve the, the on-call services agreement. And the, the local consultant on that on-call services list is Morel Engineering, and in your package, you have the, the proposal from them for, for they, to provide these services.
Okay, so I guess that should state that it was Morel Engineering for on-call services. Alrighty, everybody got that? Any more discussion with that? Number seven will be to approve an MOU concerning rave alert between the Limestone County and the Athens-Limestone County Emergency Consortium Commission District. Anybody got a discussion with that? Communications District. Anybody got a discussion with that? No discussion. Number eight, which is the sticker added on here, will be to approve, to apply for a FEMA grant for the District 2 storm shelter, and this is a 25% match funds of up to $219,000. This is out in Danny's district, he's, I think the only district that doesn't have a storm shelter in the district, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that, that's correct, and I got to wondering about that when, when I first got in office, and apparently, when the other districts were being built, Limestone County, District 2 couldn't come up with a location to put their shelter. And with our growth in, in District 2, I think it's appropriate that we just treat this one like we did all the others.
That's good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Like I said, that's a good deal right there. That's a good deal. Appreciate it Danny, thank you for your work on that. Alright, anybody got any more discussion with that? We have no budget revisions, no merch purchases, board appointments, we have none, award bids, we have none. Personnel policy, we have been doing this in the past, if it's all right with y'all, we go through this, if anybody will have any discussion, we'll just take it all up in one motion, because I think most all of them are just transfers, or move-arounds, or hires at the Sheriff's Office. If anybody doesn't have any discussion, we'll go through it, but if anybody has any, anybody wants to pull it out personally, let me know. Alright, number one will be to approve to hire Caleb King as a transitional EMA officer effective October the 2nd of '23. Number two will be to approve, approve to hire Joyce Thompson as a corrections officer effective October 2nd. Approve to hire Anastasia DeLong as a corrections officer October 2nd, and approve to hire Seth Woods as a corrections officer October 2nd, and approve to hire Jamine Jenkins as a corrections officer October 2nd. And, let's see, six will be to approve to hire Tiffany Sears as a corrections officer October 2nd, and number seven will be to transfer Ethan Wilson from corrections officer to jail corporal effective October 2nd, and number eight will be to approve to transfer Kyle Stewart from corrections officer, or Schwartz, from, from corrections officer to jail corporal effective October 2nd. And number nine, do we have any more names to add on the corrections officer?
I do not.
Okay, now, I know we've been putting that on there, you know, everyone, but I just want to make sure before we get going.
Need to scratch that one?
Scratch number nine off, and number 10 will be to approve to hire Leroy Gatlin as a part-time laborer in District 3, and if anybody wants to take any one of them up separate, or we take them all up in one motion? You want to take yours up separate?
It don't matter, don't think about him, he'll be working part-time, but if a guy that's going to be out for about three months, and when the full-time guy comes out, then he will not be there anymore. He knows that Gatlin is no relation, so just, just clear it up for the record, so.
If you want to take it up the same way.
It's fine, it's fine with y'all, I'm good.
Do you have any issue with taking them all up in one?
I don't.
Alright, so, that way, we'll just take all those up in one motion, let the record be known. Married increases, we have none today. Engineers report, Mr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We just have one subdivision for your consideration today, and it's a minor, it's Jones Road subdivision, so it'll be preliminary and final, creating three lots in District 2. It's on the east side of Jones Road, just south of Nick Davis Road. So that's all that I have for your consideration today. We have completed the chip seal portion on McCully Mill. Contractor is trying to get moved in later this week to do the wearing layer and the shoulders, and we are moving to Parker Road. So, we're getting our equipment out there, and we'll begin the patching tomorrow, I believe, and then, or next week, we should do, we should be able to get the chip sealed done. And then, then we'll move off of it for a period of time to go over and get the milling and patching, and then we'll have, and then we'll come, so that we can move the contractor, hopefully, directly from McCully Mill over to, for Semen Tree, then we'll come back and get the wearing layer and shoulders. So, we're going to, so we may have to kind of bounce around a little bit, just to make sure that we kind of keep everything moving, we're trying to push these projects through. So, right here at the end of the, right here at the end of the paving season, then we'll get, we'll be on our just main, main line, our main paving, just plant mix, doing patching, those kinds of things, starting to get ready for the next paving season, through the, until the weather shifts to where we're not able to work any longer. So, alright. Any questions for me?
You got anything for Mark?
I forgot.
Thank you, Mark. Alright, other business will be to remove, be able to sell one item on GovDeals, it's a demo software up in District 1, anybody got a discussion with that? And while we're on the other business, I want to speak on something, and I think Danny may have something on other business too, but we'll, anybody have the other business, we'll talk about it in a second, but the first thing is, as a family that has experienced this twice this year, I've sit and thought about things, and I've reached out to Mark and Angela, and I know, and I want to thank the Sheriff's Office, you know, they offer this service to, when people pass away in this community, they'll bring coffee and ice, and put out funeral signs and things like this. And I have noticed this, which I'm fortunate where I live, I have an 89-year-old neighbor that lives beside me, and I have a 93-year-old grandmother, and then I have my, my mom and dad lived beside me, and then plus me, so I mean, I have the capability of several trashcans when things like this happen. So I talked with Angela about this, with y'all's graces, this is something I think that would be good for the county to offer a service like this. We go, when people pass away, everybody brings y'all kind of food, and they bring it, everybody eats off paper plates and paper cups and everything. What I would like to do is us to, and I spoke with a couple of commissioners about this one-on-one here and there, is, is to order some cans, and Angela's giving me a price on this, to get some black garbage cans with, you know, cadulter's can or whatever, but we, when we offer this service for two weeks to the community, to give them time to get their refrigerator cleaned out and whatnot, because, and this, it would be very little tonnage weight in a year's time, but it would be something that's, we've lost a customer, just like if we've lost a citizen in the taxpaying citizens' communities, so that's something that I would like to explore, and she's giving me a price on the garbage cans, as if y'all, I mean, we would need to come up with a, I guess, an agreement or a way to work that, but I know that we already kind of do that service to a degree, we'll have people that call, say, hey, I've got, y'all come do this, because of this situation, this situation, but I think that would, we could just go out and, if somebody calls and requests a can, we could go out and drop them a can off, and we could service it for a couple of weeks, and then go back and pick it up when the next time they, and I just think that that would be something good for the commission. I know, and I want to thank the Sheriff's Office, I know that service has been going on for years, and they called me that night, and as most people know, I've lost my father this week, and last week, and I lost a child this year, and I've been through this twice this year, and that is a, and they both times, they've been there for us, so, and I think that's something as a commission that would be a good service for the community. If anybody has any discuss, I'm opening up for discussion, anybody got a discussion with that?
I'm all for it, Mr. Chairman. I ain't got a better problem with it.
Well, I just think that as citizens, you know, because I have been down that road, and like I said, I've been fortunate, but there's a lot of people that's moved in this area and stuff, that doesn't have the luxury that I have, you know, I mean, the luxury that I have is that I, you know, that I have the family members that live right there close, and a lot of people don't have a, a, you know, and I mean, I don't mean this bad, but trash is a nasty thing, and when people bring food and all this, you put it in a can or bag, whatever, you know, a lot of people have gotten up in a car, and you don't want to have to haul that to this or that, or try to get rid of it, that would be something we could offer, the service, and, because I know that, and I mean, people in this community has been good to my family, and I know they've been good to a lot of people that's lost loved ones, and that's, and I, I know, because that's just something that I have experienced personally, and I mean, and it didn't really dawn on me, and I know that until this has happened, but I know that that would be something that we could provide, and it would be a, you know. I know that that would be something that we could provide, and it would be, uh, you know, the, you know, you, you know, we all, we, you know, we escort funerals, we do this, we do that, and that's something that's kinda your last service. We, you know, it's been, you know, helping you out in the community, so, helping the families out. So, um, with y'all's graces, we'll, we'll move forward with that, so. All right, now, any other else of the business?
I'd, I'd do, I'd like to, uh, I've got a flyer here on, uh, Limestone County Strategic Plan. I think we need to process that and, or go ahead with it, and we need to come up with a scope that we want these people to address in the strategic plan, you know. Right now, we have no game plan for our growth. I think it's important that we start looking at our future needs, our current assets, and, and how we're going to address our future needs. Rest of you folks may be smart enough to do that, I'm not, uh, so I think it's important that we get some help with the direction of our county. Now, I think our new subdivision regulations can be a first step in that. You know, there's been some controversy over, over our regulations, mostly the width of a lot. Well, should the width of a lot on a county road be the same it is in a subdivision? Obviously, the answer is no, the common sense answer is no, you know, the speed limit in a subdivision, twenty-five, thirty-five miles an hour, on a county, on our rule at county roads, it's forty-five. So, it doesn't take a brain scientist to know that you shouldn't let your county roads become city streets. So, what do y'all think about that strategic plan, or is everybody good with that? Do you have any comments?
I think that, um, I think you're right in that getting some help in here to facilitate some public, public hearings and some, trying to get input, input from, uh, our citizens about the direction that they want the county to be, to, to, to go in the next, over the next ten, twenty years. Um, and I think that's what having, bringing a consultant in can, can provide us, is, is, is getting, taking all those comments and, and breaking those down, and, and reviewing, like you said, reviewing our current, um, uh, assets and figuring out how they fit into, um, what the, what the citizens would like to see, how they'd like to see their government go, um, and so I think that, I think that it, it would be, uh, a, a really good, um, option for us. I think the, the, the consultants that we've spoken with, they said that's a fifteen to eighteen-month process, um, that, uh, which would be the public hearings and, and them actually going through and looking at, at everything. So, um, I do think that, that the sooner that we get started, um, uh, then, then the better off we're gonna be. Uh, cause we have a lot of decisions that need to be made in the ne- in the coming future about, that will affect not just the next few years, but it'll affect the next ten, twenty years. And, um, so, uh, and they've told us that as, as, as we go through the process, you, that we could use them as a sounding board as we go through the process. We don't have to wait till the final report in eighteen months from then. Um, this is something that we can, we can discuss with them and, and work with them, and, and they'll, they'll be happy to give us, um, give us some advice based off of, and again, it's all based off of input from the public. Um, this isn't something that's just, it isn't something that they're, they're, they're just bringing a boilerplate in and, and saying, this is what county should do. This is, this is based off of the public and is tailored to, um, to the county based off of where we are right now, and where the, where the citizens wanna see us go, so. Um, I think that it would be beneficial, um, with it being over that long of a period of time, the cost is, is broken out over a couple of fiscal years. So it's not a, one heavy hit all at once on a budget either, so, and I, and I say heavy, it's a, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars for, uh, for them to facilitate a, a study like this.
Right now, we're not managing growth, it's managing us, so.
We're trying, we're just trying to, um,
Exactly.
To, to keep our heads above water a lot of times, we, we've heard from, from some in the, uh, the last few weeks about subdivisions and, um, the issues that arise when subdivisions are, are unchecked, um, and, and we, we, in talking with, um, in talking with developers, because I've, I've thought based on the current economy, um, that, that we would start seeing development slow down, um, in talking with a lot of developers and engineers. They've said that, yeah, there has been a little bit of a slowdown, but, um, but the demand is still so high in this area, uh, for housing that, um, that, yeah, it, it will come at a little bit slower pace, but it's not, but it's still going to happen. We're not, we're not at a, at a, at a recession stoppage of growth, we're just.
We couldn't put the sheriff over the line and keep him out.
So, um, so it, it's, but, but with that, it's not just subdivision regulations, it's not just, I mean, a strategic plan is, is how do we, how do we, when, when somebody moves to the area, somebody buys a new home, what, what all do they have to go through to be able to, to get their, get their deed recorded? Get their, um, get their taxes filed, get their utilities turned on, it's, and then once they're here, how do they make a life? What is, it's, it's, so it, it's a whole lot of questions, I mean, we, the Wellness Center, um, has been a, a, a topic that has come up. It's, um, and, and they, they wanna look into all of those type things as well. So it's not, this isn't just about regu- it isn't, it isn't a, a plan about regulation, it's a plan about giving the commission a target to aim for. Because up to this point, we just kinda had to take a shotgun approach and just hope we hit something. But if we can have a target, then we can take a more rifle, strategic approach to how we move forward, and as grants present themselves, we know whether or not they meet our goals and, and the visions of the citizens of the county, and we can, we can apply very strategically for those things, so. That, that's the, that, that I think is the goal behind it, um, so, um, and like I said, with, with you guys, um, I, I think I've spoken with all of you individually, and, and y'all wanna see a scope of work, um, of what it would take, so I would, so I have instructed the consultant to kinda give us a scope of work of what they would, what they would see. And then y'all can mark off what you think's not important and, um, make sure that we prioritize what we do think is important. So I, I'll bring you guys a scope of work in the near future for you to review.
Well, let's, let's kinda prioritize that, that we need to get going on that.
Mark, so you keep saying citizens, are we gonna do anything, you know, maybe a committee or something to kinda get some people involved?
That is, that is one of their recommendations would be a strategic committee.
Okay.
So, um, they, they would like fifteen to thirty people in a strategic committee. Um, so, uh, I, I think that, that having a, appointments from each of you guys, um, to be able to put, put that group together. Um, this would be a commitment by those citizens for the next fifteen to eighteen months, uh, coming to, coming to public hearings and meetings and hearing what's being said, and, and, um, and they would be part of kinda digesting that information that's, that's being presented, so, um, it's, it's a, it's, like I said, it's a, it's a fifteen to eighteen-month commitment by citizens of the county to be part of that committee, so, um, I, I think it's, I think it's a good, good step forward to get all of that, kinda that level of public involvement and get that level of information, I mean, they, they mentioned going into high schools, uh, which didn't even dawn on me, they said if they go, they, they like to go into high schools and talk with the senior classes at high schools. Because, I mean, that's, those senior classes, they're gonna be your next young families, and, and when we're talking about over the time of this, the time of this plan being put in place, they're gonna be the young families that are in the area and raising, raising kids, and, um, so getting their input about what they want their communities to be and what they want it, what they wanna see this county become, I mean, that's, that's important in trying to facilitate that as well. Like I said, advertising a public meeting, I mean, and trying to get people to come to it is, is important, but, but go in two areas where you can say, okay, this is a long-range plan, and what is it that, what is it that the youngest of that group, what is it that they wanna see, and what do they wanna see their community become, I think's important too, so. So it, it'd have a, a lot of public involvement would be the goal over the next fifteen to eighteen months.
Anybody else got anything else?
Uh, let's see, I got another thing here, Mr. Chairman. On the roll.
You on the roll? Good deal.
I know, I understand, we didn't get a bid for our concrete pipe again, is that correct?
Correct, uh, we, we are preparing the bid again and gonna try to send it out and hopefully, hopefully get somebody to respond this time.
Well, that, that's kinda goes in with our, uh, uh, permit to access our right-of-way. I've had a couple of occasions where contractors will tear up our right-of-way and leave it a mess. That don't sit well with me, uh, so I'd like to us to get going on, on folks having to get a permit to access our right-of-way. I know people will put, uh, a telephone thing right in the middle of the right-of-way. Well, that's not very conducive to bush hogging the road. Uh, a lot of our water lines run right along, I mean, some of them are under the road, but I think that's just something that progressed from years ago that we probably don't do anymore, so. I, I think we, people should ask us if they're gonna tear up our right-of-way and, uh, if they're gonna leave it in a mess, then I'd like to have the opportunity to say, well, you're not getting another permit until you fix this. Y'all got any comments on that? Y'all have any problems?
I don't have any trouble with it, anytime I've had trouble, I fixed it, thank anybody that's done anything in my district.
I guess I'm through, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anybody else got any other business they wanna bring up and they're talking about? Well, like I said, I appreciate everybody, and I appreciate y'all's consideration with the cans, and thank you for your comments, Danny. Um, number two on here will be to approve to transfer the following inventory, and we all, see all the things listed there below, and it's just where we're cleaning up inventory for the, where, anybody got any deal with that? And then number three will be to approve to move the following from inventory, which is several items listed below that Stephanie has been working on, and most of it's just outrun its lifespan, so see, does anybody need anything with that, or see any issue with anything on the list? All right, number four will be to approve change supplemental insurance options to Lincoln, um, financial and flexible spending to Flores. Employees who wish to remain with a current insurance provider may do so, but they'll have to pay through that through their own, um, service, the Limestone County Commission payroll will not do that. Um, anybody got a discussion with that?
Chairman, Cobbs and Allen, they're assisting us with this, and they're actually here, should any of y'all have any questions regarding it, they're right here, they just had to.
You're good with it?
I am, um, it's gonna be, uh, less money for our employees and better benefits, they can expand on that. Um, but I do feel like, and Emily was also involved, I was out actually when they discussed this, but I do feel like that it is, um, an improvement from what we've had. Um, our, the last, um, options that we had were pretty expensive for what we were getting, and, um, but like I said, they can expand on that and give you more information either now or during the break.
If anybody has any issues, we're facing recess, y'all are more than welcome to speak, but they have come in and spoke with us before on it several times, so.
If we go into this, how, how soon will it be that it'll go into effect?
January first.
January one? Okay.
And if anybody wishes to keep their current provider, they're more than welcome.
And this is something y'all gonna sit down with the employees and show them and compare, so they can kinda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And they will be here through open enrollment, through all of that and everything, so, I know they have come in and presented to us a couple of times. Like I said, anybody got any issues, more than welcome to speak with them or ask a question, so. All right, nothing else, we will, uh, we have no exact session, we'll recess for fif- fifteen minutes, we'll be back at ten o'clock. Thank y'all.